Good evening and welcome to the Cedar Falls Board of Education meeting this Monday, June 9th, 2025. Thank you all for tuning in and for all of you in attendance. I would like to call this meeting to order with the first item on our agenda being our consent agenda, which we have full of quite a few items, so I'm going to go through each one. We have our approval of agenda in last board meeting's minutes, approval of accounts payable from the past month, approval of our HR and open enrollment reports, as well as a student accident insurance offering for next fiscal year, and several agreements, annual agreements that we're renewing, which is the 25 through 27 Success Link contract, participation of non-resident students in district activities, the nursing agreement with Mercy One, Central Rivers AEA, special education allocation agreement, our EMC Storm Protection Fund agreement, and 25 through 27 activities photograph agreement. So with all those things being in the consent agenda, I will ask for a motion to approve or if there's any motions to amend or further questioning on any of the items. Okay, we have a motion from Director Gruber, and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, consent agenda carries and all items within. And we will now move on to district communications with the first item on our district communications being our CAPS group. So, once a month, we try to bring in a group or some accomplishment or something across the district that we want to kind of showcase of all the wins and the positive things that we have going on in the district. So for June, I know school's out now, so some associates are probably traveling, but we've invited Ethan Weekman and a cohort of associates and instructors to give us just an overview of how the CAPS program went this past year.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for inviting us to come share how this year went. I also want to thank the production team here at the city because when you stand outside, I felt like I was waiting for the Space Mountain at Disney with the waiting in line to be the next one on the theme ride. So it was, it got me excited about some memories when I was a younger kid. Again, my name's Ethan Weekman. I am the Cedar Falls CAPS director, and I'm excited to help share with you some of the great things that have happened this year, but more importantly, to have our associates and Megan Droste, one of our instructors, to share the boots-on-the-ground look of the things of CAPS and how it's impacted them for the school year. So before we get started on that, am I too close to this? Okay. Before we get started on that, we wanted to share some photos from this year of our associates in past years engaging in their CAPS experience. And hopefully, when you look at that, there's a couple of things that stand out to you, and one of those being the, just the engagement in the learning as you look at the different associates that are doing a variety of things. And then the second thing is within our community, and those are two important components for our CAPS program and the success of it, but also that there are challenges that come with that. And so we want to thank the school board for their continued support of the CAPS program because some of those things that we're doing don't come without some type of angst or support. So if you think about some of our associates, and you can see some pictures there, they're doing some work on houses that are outside of our school, and some are in hospitals. And so there are HIPAA things that we have to go through to make sure that our partners in our health facilities allow our students to be involved with that. And then just general, our business partners and community people that provide great projects that really help our students develop the skills at the level that they are needed. So I wanted to start off with those and just share all the great things that are happening within the CAPS program. As we go through, I'm going to have our associates that are representation that are here, some of them here for our specific CAPS experiences, and you can see up there, there are six of them, Education, Business Solutions, Careers, CAPS Med, CAPS CNA, and CAPS Industries, which is our Construction and Trades Program. So get us to start it off. We'll have our CAPS Education associates come up and share their experiences.
Hello, everyone. My name is Owen Brinker, and like Ethan said, I'm a part of CAPS Education. Cool thing about CAPS Education that is not a similar thing across all CAPS is that we actually got to do two semesters of it. We had a choice to do both CAPS One and CAPS Two, which was the equivalent of our Level One and Level Two this year. A very cool project that we were able to work on was the first-ever Design Sprint. So a Design Sprint is something that we had about 48 hours to do. We were presented a problem, and then we had 48 hours to solve that problem and then go back to those clients and solve that with them and then see which problem they want, or excuse me, which solution they wanted us to solve. So we worked with the Cedar Falls Public Library this year as a CAPS EDU team. So we were working on their social media and how they could have a little bit of a better social media presence. And you might be asking, why, as an educator, would I be working with social media and with the library? But through that, we were able to learn just how to communicate with different people as well as meet deadlines with them and then how to solve these problems that could come up when we had different ideas in mind. So that's something that we will use in education, whether that be working with fellow coworkers, administration, parents. Those problems are going to come up every single day, so we learned how to do that at a pretty early start, I think, because I think a lot of high school kids, when you're thinking about education, you don't usually get to work with adults in the community and work with them like that. But I think the most important part about CAPS Education isn't necessarily being involved in that community, but getting out in the actual school communities with our placements. So throughout the year, I had four different placements, whether that be Southdale Elementary in a kindergarten room, I was in a behavior classroom at Dr. Walter Cunningham Elementary at the east side of Waterloo, I was at Pete Junior High in a Strat One Special Education Room, as well as River Hills in a Strat Two High Need High School Special Education Room. So I got to see the whole plethora of education from the super-high needs to the more, the higher need, excuse me, the higher number of students in there as well. And through that, I was able to work one-on-one with some of these students. I was able to teach large group lessons to 25-year-old, to 20 different five-year-olds, and it was a very cool experience. So through this, I learned that CAPS is a lot more than just a class that you would take in high school where you get to have fun. I learned that it's going to be something that I will use for my entire life as a future educator, where I get to put the smiles on all the future students that I get to have. Thank you.
So my name is Emma Patterson. I also participated in CAPS One and CAPS Education Two this last year, and I was a part of the Parrot Project. So Owen, like he said, he was in the library group. I was in the parrot group. So first semester, the afternoon CAPS One strand of education did it, but I was in the morning, so I only did the part two of it. But it really opened my eyes to see working as with the district and learning how they work to get more paras and learning how valuable they were was a really valuable experience for me personally because I want to teach special ed preschool. So knowing that I'm going to need to work with paras myself, that was a really eye-opening experience for me. So my placements were at Southdale in a special ed preschool room. I was also at Lowell Elementary with, in preschool, which was like an inclusive setting, and I was at Lincoln in like K-6 special ed, and I was also in a kinder prep at Orchard Hill. So I got to see all the things, and I had so much fun. But before CAPS, I was, I helped start Ethel Discover in all the preschool classrooms, so through robotics. And so I knew that I wanted to do education before I was in CAPS, but I didn't know for sure if I wanted to do special ed preschool. And after CAPS, I'm not scared of it. I want to do special ed preschool. And now I am actually a lead five-year-old teacher out of daycare this summer, and there is a little bit from every single one of my placements in my classroom. So that's my experience in CAPS. Thank you.
I also want to share a little bit about our Business Solutions, just a couple of projects that came up this year that are interesting and unique. We had our first project from New York City, so it was a remote project. How we got that, and again, it came across our project board, and I had to do a double take on how did we get to New York City? And it turns out, one of our current associates this year, his name is Ruby Schillinger. Her older brother Sam is out there and had interactions with this gal that sent the project in, and she was looking to interact with some high schoolers, and he mentioned that there's this CAPS program in Cedar Falls that is doing some cool things. You should reach out to them. So it was an awesome project, and they got to work through remotely, which is add some challenges and some skill sets there, and working on different looks for school lunches. And they found that very valuable experience, and she gave us a good feedback on how that went and enjoyed the experience, and hopefully we'll get some more projects out of New York City. And then one that may be a little closer to home, or is a lot closer to home, if you go to the high school and you see the touchscreens that are around the high school there, one of the projects that Mr. Becker wanted to make sure we had nailed down before he retired was to get the music department archived of all of the great things that they're doing. We know we have an awesome music department, both in our chorus and in our band and orchestra, and multiple All-Staters, which getting one is an achievement. The number that we get every year is tremendous. And so he wanted to get that archived, which took a lot of work. So one of the projects was for our associates to get, gather all that information and then put it in a way, organize it in a way into those touchscreens so people come back, and I think it goes far back as 1970s, so they can go check and see who got All-State as far as individuals, but also as groups. Cool thing about that, if you were at the innovation celebration, there was going around, and I actually walked up to one of the associates and said, "How's it going?" That was on this specific project, and she mentioned, she goes, "Oh, you just missed the cool saying." I said, "Well, what happened?" She goes, "We were explaining our project and how we archive this, and this little girl asked her mom and said, 'Hey, Mom, are you in here?'" And she goes, "Well, I think I might be," and she was able to look it up and point it out. And she said her little daughter was really proud of the fact that her mom could be in that archive. So really cool to see that in action and the impact of it already. And then I'm going to pass it over to Paige, who's going to talk about careers.
Hi, my name is Paige Russell, and I've been a part of both the CAPS Careers and Med Program, but I'll first touch on Careers. So the way I like to describe Careers is, since it's not exactly as obvious compared to like education or med, is kind of for students that are interested in a field that isn't already listed in one of these six strands or that don't really know what they want to do. So when I first got into the CAPS program, I had a general idea of what I wanted to do, but obviously, I was very overwhelmed and uncertain about like stepping into adulthood and handling professionalism outside of high school. So when I first started in the CAPS Careers strand, I kind of wanted to get an idea of stepping outside of the confined curriculum that we have at Cedar Falls where we're guided by a bell, and that way we can get out in a different host site. So one of my most meaningful projects that I took part of in CAPS Careers was along with two other associates. And for some background knowledge, we all, since we're in Careers, we kind of all had a different area of interest as far as what field we went into, wanted to go into. So we worked with, I had, we all had an actual client at Unity Points Cardiac and Pulmonary Rehabilitation Center. So we created a brochure for graduating patients that were going off of, were finishing with their program and their pathway through either like a chronic illness or if they had a heart or lung surgery, and then they were getting done with that and needed to continue exercising. So we found local and affordable options to provide for them, and I've obviously learned a lot from doing that, whether it was teamwork because all of us kind of had a different background of what we wanted to do, but then also communication skills were huge because we were communicating mostly via email, but then in person, in person, we wanted to make sure that we made the most of the time that we had with her, and we're still following things like HIPAA and being clear of what she was looking for, especially because most of these patients were older, so we had to find ways to make it clear and readable with an easy font to read, but then also beneficial because she told, our client did tell us that a lot of them don't want to just sit down and look through something, they want something that will catch their eye. So all in all, I found that keeping an open mind through that was the most beneficial and, which has led me to wanting to go on to CAPS Med. So from that, it was, for me, most important because I was able to take the durable skills and the skills that I learned from CAPS Careers and actually apply that in CAPS Med. So one of my most favorite things I took part of in CAPS Med was what we call Immersion Week, and that's where we have one week where all of the associates were given a placement in different areas of interest. So for me, I was interested in occupational therapy, and I wasn't sure if I was interested in a specific, at first, I was interested in pediatrics, but then I kind of was unsure of, maybe I do like to be in special needs or older. So I was able to get a week-long experience where it was basically like job shadows, but some of them where you were actually able to interact a little bit more than just a regular job shadow. And for me, that was super beneficial because I learned that maybe I'm not super, I don't love being with an older crowd, not that I don't know how to work with it, but I really found that I was able to connect well with a younger crowd in pediatrics because I was given chances to interact with them and help out. And for me, that was what tied me into wanting to work along with some other healthcare professionals that are part of the interviewing processes in occupational therapy schools. So they have shown me a lot of things about resume building and how to present myself professionally and as well as interview prep and practices. And obviously, without the CAPS program, I wouldn't have been able to get a leg up on all of that. So yeah, I'm very thankful for the CAPS program.
Okay, I get the last two here. The CNA program, an update there, we just got done with our last cohort this spring, had 17 associates for the first time. We have a fairly high pass rate for both of the tests that they have to take, and this year, we had every associate pass the test first time through, both tests, which was tremendous, and that's not an easy feat to do. We want to give a huge shout-out to Western Home Communities for the continued partnership where our associates get to train in their facilities and then also work with their residents there as they go into their clinicals each year. So next year, we're excited that we have enough interests that we're running to. We're going to have a fall CNA program and a spring, so the demand for it and the need is there. So that's an exciting partnership that continues to grow. Our CAPS Industries, which is our Construction and Trade Program, a couple of highlights there, they worked on two houses in the Waterloo area this year and then also did a remodel of their host site, so I sent that out on social media. It looks, it's always nice to be able to give back to our partners, and we had an opportunity to do that. And so now they have a beautiful meeting room that they share with at Plum Tech. So a lot of learning that goes on there, and if you get to talk to the people that are involved in that, they love what they do. So Dave Grun's doing a great job with our industries. Those are our six strands. We wanted to give a little bit of a historical background. Megan's right here, and she's going to go and do that, talk a little bit about, just a reminder of where we're at at the beginning and where we're at today.
Awesome. Well, I'll take you down a trip on memory lane a little bit, all the way back to 2017. It was the spring. We had 13 associates. Ethan, along with our business developer at the same, at the same time, Nate Clayberg, they developed kind of the foundation of what you've seen today. So we started with one program. In the fall, I came on to create the Education and Training Program. We added Industries, then later, we added CNA. So you're seeing kind of the evolution of CAPS, and it all started back in 2017. Good news travels fast, and the surrounding communities were wanting to get a part, take a part of CAPS as well. And so we've been partnering with surrounding school districts to create our Cedar Valley CAPS Consortium, where we provide training and support for those Cedar Valley programs on the screen there. Our newest one coming up is going to be Sumner Fredericksburg this next school year, so really excited about that. Not only good news travels on the eastern side of Iowa, but also on the western side. So a couple of years ago, we've expanded over on the western side of Iowa, so a CAPS program hopefully is near any student that can take advantage of all these great opportunities. And we're really excited to see where it keeps going. So Ethan's going to share a little bit about some of the milestones from this year in our own neck of the woods in Cedar Falls.
Now, Dr. Patty made sure, told me to make sure it's short, so we're going to go through this quickly. Just some, some big milestones this year, roughly, we, looking at the numbers, we serve roughly 70% of our senior class to go through CAPS, which, when you think about a work-based learning program, that's a tremendous number, and it takes a lot to make sure to do that of supports from the district and from a school board at that higher level. We did an action research with the America Succeeds on Durable Skills, the, kind of the holy grail of durable skills is how do we confidently measure what good communication is and problem-solving is and critical thinking? And is it even possible to do that? Right now, we're in the process of a research project and utilizing different tools and resources to see if we can convincingly come up with some type of measurement, some AI work that's been done that, we used a lot of AI interviewers and assessments and things. And so the results after this year, we've got rough data. What we do know is America Succeeds is tremendously excited about it, and also it's in partnership with Northeastern in Boston, enough that they're going to do it again. So next, next year, we're going to go to Phase Two of that project and continue to develop, hopefully, some type of measurement that will allow us to measure the growth of our associates in all of the durable skills. We started a CAPS Med Advisory Board this year that was pivotal for the immersion week Paige was just talking about, making sure we can get all of our associates in. That's a, that's a heavy lift by our partners in the medical industry and the community to take on associates for a whole week, as many as we had. We had 90, roughly 90 of them in the program this year. So when you think about those placements in two semesters, that's a lot. And so we wouldn't have been able to do that with advisory board and people that are committed to making that happen, so that was a big addition. Another thing coming up next year is thinking about what does CAPS look like at the junior high level, and we're going to be starting a seventh-grade exploring CAPS, so one section of at Pete and one section at Holmes for both semesters. So Andy Bealan, I believe he's here, there he is, and he's going to be instructing that and leading the charge in that. So we're excited about that expansion in the programming. And lastly, the largest innovation celebrations we've ever had. So if you were able to make it, those of you that were there, thank you for doing that, those who can't, completely understood. But as far as just traffic and flow, it was, it was by far our largest, and a lot of that had to do with our sixth grade. So I'm going to be honest about that. If you get to see the sixth grade teams in the juxtaposition next to the high schoolers and just seeing the tremendous work that our sixth grade teachers are doing with their, with their students, it's a really fun night, and it's a great night for celebration. I'm not going to show this again just because of time sakes, but if you're interested, we had a, an organization marketing group out of Kansas City that came up for Experience.Work, which is a new nonprofit organization highlighting our Crichton project, and if you know anything about that, Kabir Bhatia was part of our program. He took on a project when he was in high school, and he's now one of the lead engineers at Crichton, and he worked through them based on that project. So it's just an example of what work-based learning or profession-based learning, the type of impact it can have. So if you'd like that, I think Janelle or I can share that with you. We can get that done. With that, I did hand out a flyer to you, the fuel to our program is projects. So if you're interested in engaging, I know all of you are involved in the community or with businesses or organizations, we would love to get projects. So anybody that's out there on the YouTube channel that's listening in, projects are the fuel, and you can always submit one at cfcaps.org. Other than that, thank you very much for the time, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, let's give everyone a round of applause. Yeah, thank you to the associates for covering your experience well and wish you the best in your careers and to taking everything you learned with you. And thanks to Ethan and Megan for making time tonight to come and share with us. Okay, we will now move into our May financial reports. Oh, sorry. We haven't finished our district update.
No, it's all right. It's all right. I'm used to it.
The last, but very far from least.
I was going to say, when I walked up, could I, like twice a year, just like get a pass on doing this part of my presentation after trying to follow the students when they, when they give great things? But there, we have lots of great things still to talk about, so I will.
Post-graduation, I think this is an important one.
Yeah, it is, it's a big one. So you can see right here, this was one of the photos from our grad walk, which is when our seniors, after commencement rehearsal, are bussed back to their junior highs first in their elementary buildings to do a walkthrough and celebrate where they came from. So we'll show a few more of those, but I'm just going to do some congratulations quick. This is our women's tennis team, and they finished eighth in the state at their state competition. And then our women's golf, they finished fifth in the state, so congratulations to both of those teams. And then our men's and women's track teams here are shown, the men on the left there finished runner-up in the state competition, and the women on the right finished third place overall. So congratulations to all of those athletes. We had some outstanding performances, of course, with the state track meet, we had the four-by-four men's relay, we're state champions, Charlie Gaul, state champion in the 1500, and then the sprint medley, we're state champions as well, along with Jackson Schreiber in the 400 hurdles, and then, of course, Chloe Nissen, four A state champion in the 400 meters. We had lots of runner-ups and third, fourth places, but just really wanted to, of course, highlight these champions, so congratulations to all of those athletes. And then this was another one of our fun days in May. We have our kindergarten, incoming kindergarten students, that will be the class of 2038, come and do their visit day at their elementary schools, and then they do a quick little signing ceremony, able to get some photo ops there. So that was another highlight we had at our elementaries in May. And then, of course, we had our preschool graduations. We have preschool across all of our buildings now, so all of the buildings held wonderful celebrations for all of these kiddos that completed their preschool year. And then a really special part of the grad walk this year was, this was our first year, we had students that actually had gone to Aldrich Elementary. So these students pictured here had their sixth grade year at Aldrich, and then they were able to, previously, we've had to kind of bus kids from other buildings over to do a quick walkthrough, but this was the first year we were able to add in Aldrich as its own grad walk. So these students were the first students that were the sixth graders at Aldrich. And just other, few other highlights, our elementary buildings and junior highs do an amazing job of welcoming and really celebrating these students and giving some special photo ops. They always make sure they have the names of the students that are coming back, so they have some special signs for each of the students. They do names so the teachers know what, who these kids are that are walking by them because they probably look a little different. So they do a lot of extra work to make this possible. So also wanted to highlight, of course, we had our commencement celebrations. We had one student that didn't make it to commencement that day. She had an unfortunate accident that didn't allow her to come, and our high school staff put on a special ceremony for her at the high school auditorium, just a couple days following commencement. So wanted to congratulate her and, of course, all of our graduates. I'm going to do some highlights and then the construction projects still happening. This is the Tiger Performance Center, of course. You can see the walls that are going up there in between the high school and the stadium. Kind of a different viewpoint there. There's a lot of work happening, and this is a quick update of the pool construction. Pretty sure this is looking to the east in the pool, kind of from the northwest corner, I believe, looking across the pool construction there. Looking for anyone to verify that that's correct. Mr. Becker was fabulous and took these photos for me today, so I'm pretty sure that's, that's kind of what we're looking at there. So the pool construction is, of course, still happening, be completed over the summer and then open in fall for students and then the swim teams. Also, of course, wanted to mention, this is a fundraiser for the Tiger Performance Center, Films on the Field is going to be happening this Saturday, June 14th at 6:30 and 9:00 PM up at the stadium. You can find out more information online, and I meant to jot down the movies. Joyce, do you remember the movies?
Jumanji, does that sound right?
That sounds right, Lego.
The original.
The original. And Lego Movie. So there's two opportunities there, so you can buy those tickets online. There'll be concessions and really encourage the community to come out and support this fundraiser for the TPC. And then, of course, wanted to mention also for the Booster Club, they have their Pat Mitchell Memorial Golf Outing. That's going to be on Thursday, June 26th. You can find that information online to sign up as well. And then we will be doing an open house at the high school on Friday, June 27th at 2:00. We have had a lot of requests from alumni or groups that are coming back to celebrate their class reunions, so we're going to open up the high school for people to come and tour that and walk around the building. And of course, wanted to make sure to mention, we'll have our marching band, a lot of groups that'll be in Sturgis Falls Parade then on that Saturday of the weekend. We've still got summer sports happening, so you can follow along with all of baseball, softball on the Bound app, and then we'll still be sharing stuff over the summer, although it'll be a little quieter.
I do know that they need volunteers for the Pat Mitchell Golf Outing. I'm sure you all got a link or an email, so please, please sign up. I know they would appreciate you taking a slot if you, if you can.
Okay, well, thank you, Janelle, and sorry about that mishap earlier.
It's okay.
So now we will move on to item E of our agenda, which is reviewing our May financial reports.
Sure, thank you. Absolutely. Hard to believe that we're already in May and starting with June here already, so we'll, we'll review these rather quickly as you're fully aware of all of the uses of these particular funds. The general fund, obviously, is our overall operations of our funds. We have our revenues of a little over $6.3 million with expenditures of $5.6 million for total cash investments of $22,410,587. We do have our management fund, which the majority of those expenditures fund, which the majority of those expenditures do occur in July at the time of our premiums that are due. We had revenues of $94,000 with expenditures of $4,000. And those expenditures do account for, as we do add fleets, vehicles through our fleet, and so therefore our insurance does adjust. You'll see cash, total cash investments of $1,170,695. We do have our capital projects fund, which is our utilized for the construction of our new high school. You'll note, we had minimal revenue of a little over $2,000, which was interest. We did have our final expenditures of a little over $1.1 million, then leaving that cash balance of zero. We do continue to finalize our, our high school projects, which we utilize these funds accordingly. Therefore, as I had indicated, by June, these funds would be utilized completely. We do have our SAVE, which is our one cent sales tax of revenues of a little over $705,000 with expenditures of $11,595 for total cash investments of $14,762,162. We then do have our PEPL, which is utilized for our roofing, building improvements as well as fleet. We had revenues of $1.3 million with then our expenditures of a little over $1.4 million, which is primarily the naditorium as we continue that project. Those funds are flowing through, that includes our donation funds that we receive as well as then funds from the city for total cash investments of $11,108,329. And then we do have our debt service. Our debt service, we had revenues of $394,985. We do have our expenditures, this was the second payment of our principal and interest payments that are due, that it did occur in May, of $9,279,607 for total cash investments remaining in that fund of $10,135. One thing to note, a question that has been asked previously, the approximation of percentage of interest versus principal in that payment of $9 million. We had 22% is approximately the interest of that $9 million, but then that remaining 78% goes towards our interest of those, of those services. And then those remaining funds, we have our student activity. We had obviously activity throughout, as Janelle had explained, of revenues of about $219,000. We have expenditures of $76,930 for total cash investments of $1,057,421. We have our agency fund as well as our enterprise fund. Our enterprise fund is our nutrition fund. Again, our nutrition fund is a standalone fund that funds specifically all of the costs associated to the nutrition. That would include salaries and benefits as well as the food cost. We had revenues of a little over $407,000 with expenditures of $252,134 for a total cash balance of $3,799,99657. We have our student coffee shop, which you'll see in June, will have minimal activity as we move forward as school is no longer in session. The balance is associated to our coffee shop ending in May, as well as in our River Hills Consortium with our river, with our revenues of $1.1 million. Expenditures is zero with cash balance of $1,196,989. Again, that is a flow-through account with all of our districts that do participate in the River Hills Consortium. Those dollars do then zero out as we move forward with our ending balance as of June. And then these last two slides are the balances as of our certified budget at this time last year, where we sit based on those budgets, where we anticipate to be. You'll see that we are running very, very favorably within all of our, our areas based on our certified budget to those accounts at this time last year. Any questions that you may have for
So June is the last month then of the fiscal year?
That would be correct, yes.
So I guess next month we'll complete out the year and
Yeah.
Start fresh.
Absolutely.
Okay, hearing no questions. We will now move to item F, which is a special presentation, another special presentation we have tonight, which should be fun. And that is regarding science curriculum adoption. So we have a special guest here to go over that tonight. So welcome, Ms. Koda.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having us. Yeah, I feel like we were positioned very well in tonight's meeting, following up on all the great things that our CAPS students are doing, that we are hoping to only strengthen through this work in science and durable skills and authentic learning. So that was great. In addition to maybe putting a dent in that budget that Janelle just shared through adopting science materials. So we, we had a full year of pretty deep analysis of some different science materials. I've done this for years for other districts, but this was the first time I got to do it as my position in a district and for my own children. So this was an extra special curriculum adoption and the scope was larger than most that I've done. So it was a good challenge. I am the Associate Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I have my team with me here because all good decisions come with a collaborative team. And so I've got some friends in the crowd that are going to speak with you as well. Also, I guess they just left me to come by myself, but if you guys want to come up. Amy Colehouse and Sarah Cooper are our Curriculum and Professional Development Leads for elementary and secondary. They also help lead this, this team. And then also our Instructional Technology Director, Brian Unruh, was part of this as well. So had some pretty good minds going into the work. So just a quick rundown of what, what we hope to, to look through tonight and not take too much of your time, but certainly also answer your questions and be thorough as we can about the process that we went through to determine this. So that is kind of laid out as far as the, the order that we did proceed with. So we'll, we'll share the timeline, how we developed a vision for this work, tell you a little bit about the committee, our approach by, by using Iowa Science Standards. You'll learn a little bit about that. We, we late in the game learned that our state was revising our science standards. And so we, we kind of played alongside of them as that was happening and made sure that we stayed on top of that to ensure materials were updated to match that, those changes. We, we gathered a lot of feedback and then, then working through the actual selection of, of the resource and then planning for professional learning for our teachers and then how that implementation will go. So that's exactly what we plan to kind of touch on those nuggets tonight with you.
All right. So you can see here, this is our timeline for the year-long work that we did. Initially, we had, sorry, initially, we had talked about just doing a secondary adoption and then quickly decided that we needed to look at K-12 because it was the coherent process. So a year ago in May, we started, Amy and I led our first Zoom meeting when we had our whole team together. And we'll talk about that team here in a little bit. But then throughout the year, we moved to a deeper study of where we are currently, or where we have been currently in Cedar Falls. And then throughout the year, explored potential materials. And then this spring, we wrapped up finalizing our resource selection, which you get to hear about this evening. And we're super excited about where we are today in preparation for the summer and the fall when we start the, the 25, 26 school year. We came up with a vision statement collaboratively as a team. This team was K-12. And it came from our teacher voices. We had teachers in small groups and they really dreamed about who we are as Cedar Falls and what we believe in science education. And it was really cool to see each of those tables come up then with a very similar description. And then we put all those together. And you can, I'm not going to read the vision to you, but you can see the vision there on the screen. This is what we decided that as a team, our vision for science education was going to be.
Yeah. So each meeting that we, that we convened, we, we revisited this vision in addition to having a guaranteed promise going into looking at materials, that we came in with an open mind and ensured that we had high-quality evidence-based materials in front of us and that we tried not to bring any preconceived thoughts around our science work and that we really came with an open mind for each of the three that we did evaluate. Again, you'll hear more about that process, but that vision really played a critical role. And again, as you, as you heard earlier about the critical thinking, the problem solvers, the students that we really want to produce in Cedar Falls, that, that led the charge for us.
So as Kelly said, anything done well is done through a team. So last spring, Sarah and I got the pleasure to form a science committee. And this was a kindergarten through 12th grade science committee. And we really had to think strategically about who needs to be at the table, who needs to have a voice, who has perspective and needs to be part of this decision. We were really intentional in choosing people who could represent not only their buildings, but their grade level. So at the elementary level, we had someone from every grade, from kindergarten through sixth grade, along with someone from every building. And we really asked them to come to those meetings to represent those hats and to think beyond themselves, but think about who am I representing as a kindergarten teacher or a teacher from North Cedar? And what do I need to represent? What do I need to share? What do I need to advocate for? We also had an instructional coach at the elementary level and a building principal. And then at the secondary level, we also chose strategically to make sure we had representation from our junior high, from seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, and then up into our high school as well. And really thought about life science, physical science, earth science. How did we make sure we got representation from those different teams within the high school as well, as long, along with an instructional coach and a building principal as well. So that team then was able to come together monthly and represent those hats and bring those voices back and forth to the team and then back to their building as a back-and-forth communication channel.
All right. So as I, as I noted earlier, our state also went through a science standard revision at the same time we started this process. And so to ensure we stayed in touch with that, our very own Kimberly Wilmer, who couldn't be here tonight with us, she's a busy mom. She was able to attend those meetings in Des Moines to stay on top of that. She is a biology teacher at our high school and did a tremendous job of taking very clear notes for us and reporting back so that we stayed side by side as, as that process was happening. We did receive like community feedback as far as like some of those skills as she went through that process. And so you may have heard some of that. There was some back-and-forth with the standards and then a final decision was made in late April. So we were able to, it was good timing for us as we also made our final decision on materials. As, as Sarah noted, we've really focused on coherence and having a, a K-12 experience for our students that is similar and in common. We've done it in mathematics now, which has been successful. And we wanted to ensure that same consistency throughout our programming for science. So that was a very important thing to us, which is why we did have a K-12 I guess that was just an additional program consideration that was added there. But again, scope and sequence, it does go K-12. And so we can have those common dialogue. So to start, we, one of the beautiful things and one of the tough things about science is that there are very few materials that are researched, reviewed and at a high-quality level that we really felt comfortable looking at. So that's a good thing because that narrowed our field down pretty quickly, but it also gave us fewer options. But, but again, that was okay. So we started with the three there on the left. So we started with Amplify Science, Open SIED, and Savvas Experience Science were the three that our, that our team chose to look at. And again, we started there because they had evidence and research backing them already. The rubric in the center there, that is clickable. If any of you want to look at that, you certainly can. There was 10 criteria that we chose to look at. Again, it followed our Cedar Falls vision quite closely. And then we prioritize things such as alignment to standards, usability, cross-cutting concepts, three-dimensional learning, things like that, that, that ensured, again, back to that critical thinking, problem solving that we heard from CAPS. So many of those things that we believe very deeply in in Cedar Falls School. So, so that rubric is attached there. The, the final selection, there is no drum roll, but the final selection was Experience Science through, through Savvas. And that is where I want our, our team to kind of speak to some of why that did become our final selection through the process. You will see, we will have K-8 will be, will be a common experience. Actually, K-5 is like their elementary version. And then there are 14 modules that our middle school, junior high students will experience in sixth through eighth grade. And then we will also be adopting chemistry and physics. So again, it's, it's a, what they refer to as a 5E kind of inquiry-based experience through the program that they will begin in kindergarten and experience all through chemistry and physics and eventually biology. They are working on that. It is new program. So we're excited to be kind of one of the trailblazers of it, of the work. So yeah, this is our team. I'm going to invite you guys to come on up here. The first one there is Kimberly Wilmer. She was our biology teacher that did the state work with us. Again, was not able to be here, but she did leave us a quote there that she said, "The possibility of a coherent K-12 curriculum excites me because it creates a connected learning experience where each grade builds on the last, supporting deeper understanding and collaboration across grade levels. Last fall, I was part of a team that wrote the new Iowa Science Standards, which gave me valuable insight into how thoughtfully designed standards support long-term learning and that experience helped better evaluate potential curricula for coherence, alignment, and student engagement. I'm especially excited about the real-world phenomena embedded within Savvas that can be used to spark curiosity and make science more meaningful for our students." So that was her, her voice in the process from that high school lens. Also with us tonight is, is Andy. He is an instructional tech coach or integrations at our junior high. So he works at Holmes and Pete's. Also, you're going to hear from Jamie, who's an instructional coach at Lincoln Elementary, and Tanya, who is a kindergarten teacher at Aldrich. So a variety of voices to kind of hear their take on the experience.
So one of the big things that we liked about the Experience Science Program was the voice and choice that was available for not only teachers, but also for students. So all of the project ideas that are in there as far as wrapping up the different units, there's options in there for students that they may, you know, sometimes they're taking a test depending on what the teacher assigns. Sometimes we're working on a project and that project might be a video. It might be making a collage. It might be a model. And so there's a lot of opportunities for students to kind of express themselves there and show what they know in the, in a way that makes sense to them. Also for the teachers, we know in all of our units, we don't always have all of the time in the world. You know, to do every unit the way they want, you'd be teaching seventh grade science for two years. So they provide with each unit a list of essential things saying, if you need to pare this unit down here, the five things that you have to hit and the rest of them kind of as, as you have time. And so teachers will have that opportunity to pare lessons down if needed, when needed. And the durable skills also that are in there. We know durable skills is a big push and initiative here in the district. So things like collaboration, communication, creativity, critical thinking and fortitude are just some of the ones that are highlighted within the text, giving students opportunities to practice those skills and get better at those.
So I have been in the district for 26 years. I've been on many adoption committees, but this is my first time as an instructional coach. So I was getting to look through the lens this time, not just of for first grade or third grade, or what would I be teaching? What would my students be learning? But really looking at the whole program. So looking at K-6, looking at the connections across grade levels and also what it would, how it would pair with the curriculums that we currently have. So one thing that we saw right away as we dug into the materials that we really liked about Savvas was that it paired really nicely with Amplify. As we were starting to look at the units, we were seeing a lot of connections between the topics. When we switched to Amplify two years ago, learning through content and knowledge and teaching our ELA skills, we found that a lot of the topics, we typically feel like we're teaching science when we're teaching animals and plants and space, but we're teaching just the ELA skills and we're teaching the content, but not getting into the engage and the evaluate and extend. And so pairing that with the science units that we're going to be adopting, we really think is going to be a nice cross-curricular approach for our students. We also found that Savvas has done a lot of the heavy lifting of correlating the standards. So not just the ELA, the topics I'm referring to, but also just the ELA skills that we're teaching. They specifically are telling us where those standards are showing up in their units. So as we're teaching them in ELA, we're also getting the opportunity to practice those in science. in science as well as math and even social studies connections. We found that they also do a nice job of showing how it goes outside of the classroom, home connections with parents. There was a component of taking it local, so seeing how what we're learning in science goes out into the community. So we really felt like Savvas really laid out a program that helped us to have a really cross-curricular approach that didn't think of science just as like a separate time of the day.
I was on the CKLA committee too. And so I just was really excited, like what Jamie was saying, the connections to CKLA are just really great. So as soon as our, our decision was made, I asked Kelly, I'm like, can we jump in and try this out? So I did. And so it kind of went along with when we were doing our kindergarten unit of Taking Care of the Earth. I jumped into the Savvas and I did living things in their environment. And what I found was it, the program really has a great online, very easy to navigate for teachers. And it also has a teacher's manual that is also very easy to navigate. And all of the teacher prep videos that are included are helpful with background information. It easily, the online portion also easily translates into PowerPoint presentations and activities. All of the activities emphasize the five Es of engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate. So the kids are, the teacher is able to pick the activities that go along with those five Es of instruction. The kids really, from the kid perspective, they really enjoyed the hands-on station activities. So we had just done the CKLA unit on Taking Care of the Earth, so they had some background information. But we did the Living Things in Their Environment and they learned how they, animals change the environment. So we did a hands-on experience where I hid some nuts in some dirt and they had to pretend they were squirrels and they were noticing that they changed the environment as they went. And they were like, oh yeah. And they had to draw their, they had to draw the dirt before and draw the dirt after and kind of understand how animals change the activ, change their environment. And then we learned about how people also change the environment. We already learned how planting trees is really great. So I gave them some dirt and they planted popsicle sticks all over for trees because they were very excited about planting trees. But then I gave them Legos and said, now you have to build a house and remove tree, like who can remove the fewest number of trees to build their house? And they really understood how, how, how humans also affect the environment. So they were just real, I mean, they're loving the hands-on activities and the learning that goes along with it.
Yeah, that was so cool. She shared that with our team and it was just like so great. Reminded me of the Lorax, but it was great. So yeah, so, so that is hearing from the team. Again, it was a long year of really digging in pretty deeply to the, to the work to get where we are right now. So our next steps are now like supporting our teachers in new, with new materials and new, some new learning. And so ensuring that they have the adequate training moving forward. So we, we will be teaming up with the AEA to do some science background, like we spoke to that five Es kind of what is in GSS? What is three-dimensional learning? To ensure that instructional practices are, are in place and, and that we're prepared to use these materials. In addition to that part comes through Savvas, the curriculum provider, that will ensure that we have our technology set up and our books are ready and, and that we can navigate like what, what Tanya spoke to about the usability. So we have both of those planned for, for summer and into fall. And we have a science curriculum team that will continue learning and supporting the same kind of process, communicating internally with their buildings, bringing it back to our team and ensuring that we have that back and forth to maintain a hopefully successful implementation with the new materials. So that is our plan. We're hoping the elementary can get at least one new unit prior to our gathering in, I think, October, November, October, so that we can really dig in and get some good feedback on it and learn together in our, in our grade level teams and such. So that is our plan. Any questions?
All right, questions?
Quick one. I noticed you mentioned a lot of connection with the CKLA Amplify. I noticed also that Amplify was one of the curriculums that had been considered. And not that I'm one for putting all of our eggs in a basket, single basket, single company, but the connections part had me curious why Experience was chosen over the Amplify version.
This is a great question, Mr. Gruber, because, and, and actually, Open Sayed has a very similar layout to Illustrious Math that we also use. And so remembering that component of really not bringing in any other notions coming to this decision, it, in all honesty, wasn't the direction starting the whole thing we thought we might go. Amplify, we found, didn't have any, unfortunately, any deeper content connections than either of the other two. The units were all very similar. And generally publishers have very different writing teams for a science and a literacy. But we did think immediately like, man, the design is the same, the layout will be the same, it will take some of that cognitive usability away from the original piece from our teachers. And they did notice that in, in Amplify, that it was designed similarly, but just the content was not as engaging for kids. It felt as though there was less hands-on, less, and you guys certainly can speak to that too, even down to just like kind of not as exciting and, and kind of black and white and mundane and the, it wasn't as authentic as pictures and some of those things that, that kind of pulled away. Did you want to share something?
I just also think we found that the Amplify science seemed to be heavy in reading and writing. And if we went back to that science vision, we wanted kids experiencing doing, being in science and not reading and writing about it. And I think that was one of the biggest things our teams found with Amplify was, gosh, it seems like we're going to read about science and write about science and stuff experiencing it.
Yep. And we feel confident in our reading and writing in CKLA and Amplify. So, so it did feel, feel, there was certainly heavy discussion. That's a great question. Anything else?
Okay, so with tonight's approval, we would be on track for introducing this in the fall then, correct?
That is certainly the hope. Yes.
Good. Okay, any further questions? Well, I want to thank Kelly, Ms. Cota here, and Sarah and Amy for coming and, and leading us through this. And also for all of you committee members, Andy, Jamie, Tanya, and also Kimberly that wasn't able to be here. And thank you so much for all of your hard work over the past year. I've, I've seen evidence of it in, I think, the Lincoln visit that we were at. We saw evidence of it all displayed there, so.
That was another team member, Ms. Percol, I think. I did hear that. So that's great.
So yeah, thank you so much and thanks for taking time to come and present this to us as well. It's a pleasure.
And certainly ask any questions as the year goes on and you see in those classrooms. So that's how we learn. So thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
This does require a motion, so I will request a motion to approve.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the K-12 Experience Science curriculum license, curriculum licenses and materials from Savvas Learning Company in the amount of $815,704, as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries. And it is approved. We will now move to item G on our agenda, which is approval for authorization of payments for year-end claims.
Yes, this is an annual request that we have. This allows the, the business office to process those end-of-year claims. As President Stutzman indicated earlier, June is our end of our fiscal year, then it allows us to make those claims in that fiscal year accordingly, rather than gapping it and having some outstanding expenditures in our new, in our new fiscal year. So this just allows us to process those claims as well as then these claims are presented at our next board meeting in July for the board to review as well.
Okay, any questions for Donnell? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District give authorization to the Chief Financial Officer for the payment of year-end claims. A listing of year-end claims will be submitted to the board at the first school board meeting of the new fiscal year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries. And we have another kind of year-end item here, which is, item H here, which is approval of property loss transfer report. So, Donnell, do you want to?
Sure.
Cover this one again?
Absolutely. This is an annual request that does occur each year as indicated. This is just a list, in the board packet, you'll see a list of our property loss. These were a few of the items that occurred. This is per Iowa code, where allowable expenditures to move. This is the premium, or the deductible, excuse me, associated to these particular claims. We are required to issue those payments out of a fund associated to, to that. And therefore, then we can move those claims to our management fund, which is allowable expense to have those deductibles. So this year, we are requesting $2,000 be moved from our management to our general fund to cover those particular expenses for this year.
And those are the only two claims we had?
That, well, yeah, that did reach that particular need. So we've had other claims, but did not reach those, those thresholds, so.
I would see this as a positive.
Very much so.
It's unexpectedly low, so. Okay, any questions for Donnell? Hearing none, I will request a motion to approve fiscal year '25 property loss transfer report.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School Board of Directors approve the property loss deductible transfer of $2,000 to the general fund from the management fund for the 2024-2025 school year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries. And now we have a salary benefit adjustment item. So item I of our agenda is approval of supervisors, managers, coordinators, transportation department, IT department technicians, and 12-month clericals. So, Ms. Youngblood, you have this one?
We are recommending an average total package wage plus insurance premiums, IPRs, and FICA increase for our hourly paid and salaried employee groups of 2.87%. The employee groups to which those increases will apply are category one, our 12-month secretarial clerical, our information and technology service technicians, our bus drivers and bus mechanics. Category two is our directors, associate directors, professional and salaried staff, and supervisors and managers. The cost of the increase in compensation from the general fund and nutrition fund is $112,612.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any questions for Ms. Youngblood? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the total package increases as presented for each employee group for the 2025-26 school year. The board further grants the superintendent or designee the authority to use his or her independent discretion in allocating increases, if any, for each employee group so long as the total cost to the district does not exceed the approved total package increase in each employee group. It is the board's understanding and intent that this grant of authority and use of discretion by the superintendent or designee may result in some employees receiving more or less than the total package.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, so that last caveat statement that's read goes into, went into effect probably five or six years ago. There was a statewide audit of a district that because there were some variations of the total package, usually comes to rounding and cents, but it was a site that they, the, the district was cited because there, somebody got 2.86%, somebody else got 2.88%. So that is basically saying because of some of those different challenges and issues that there is some discretion that is allowed. We don't want to get cited in a statewide audit and not follow the direction of the, the rounding formulas that we use based on total package increases. So that is going to be the same verbiage that is used in, in the next wage and salary adjustment group with administrators as well.
So if I could maybe rephrase that, what you're saying is the intent is for it to be the same across the board, but that's required due to small rounding errors.
I agree, yes.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I read the motion.
Sorry, there's a motion on the table, which now I will ask for a second.
Second.
Dr. Orvis, and all in favor say aye.
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 And all opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries. And we'll move on to item J, which is a similar salary benefit adjustment for the administrative team. So Dr. P, I'll let, Dr. Patti, I'll let you cover this one.
Yes, so very similar. These are similar packages to our other groups across the district as well that have been previously negotiated, previously approved. Recommended for an average total package salary plus insurance premiums, IPRs, and FICA increase for administrators is 2.83%. That excludes the superintendent. But this will be for executive cabinet members, building principals, building associate principals. Total cost of increase is $105,923. And again, the recommendation for granting the superintendent the authority to exercise the independent discretion for the salary changes for each of the individuals within this group, as long as the total cost does not exceed the approved average of the package increase.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve?
I move that the Cedar Falls School District Board of Education approve the total package increase as presented for the cabinet-level administrators, principals, and associate principals, excluding the superintendent for the 2025-26 school year. The board further grants the superintendent the authority to use his independent discretion in allocating increases, if any, for the employee groups so long as the total cost to the district does not exceed the approved total package increase for the group as a whole. It is the board's understanding and intent that this grant of authority and use of discretion by the superintendent may result in some employees receiving more or less than the total package.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further questions before we move to a vote? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion carries. And we'll now move to item K, which is our superintendent's report. So Dr. Patti, I think you have a few things for us tonight.
Yeah, very brief. We have the, kind of a luncheon boarder street with our administrative team, June 11th, 11:30 to 12:30 this Wednesday at the admin office. Certainly would, hope everyone can attend. I'll send out a calendar invite. I realized I had not done that, so I'll send that out first thing tomorrow morning. That way everybody has the opportunity to respond. And there'll be, be some tabletop discussions, some conversations with administrators around just some of the things that are happening across the district in each of the individual buildings, which is really exciting to hear. Next board meeting is July 14th. Before we know it, it'll be August and we'll have kids back in the building, which is amazing how time seems to go quickly.
All right, thank you for that. Any questions for Dr. Patti?
Couple things. One, the retreats at the admin building.
It is, correct, yep.
And then second, do you have, can, are you able to offer any updates on the incident on the last day of school involving the bus?
Not a whole lot. Our, you know, the challenge was, we, we had a bus accident the last day of school. It was the secondary route that was going home on the north side of town. It was during the rain that was occurring. It appears that the bus lost control, did tip over on its side. It's a situation where police are still looking at some of the, the information, trying to determine exactly what did take place, what did happen. We're really fortunate that there were no serious injuries, although it's something that we... that we take extremely serious to review all the actions. We have three different cameras that are on the bus, in every bus at all times, internal and external, so we can kind of continue to review that. At this time, I don't really have much more that I can add, I guess, besides that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I would say, though, thank you to our parents and our students and our driver. Parents and students, we followed up with each of them that day, but also the day after, just to make sure, to see how the kids were doing and kids were responding. It's just something, you know, our district takes great pride in, A, caring about all of our people, but also just make sure that we reach out if there's questions, if there's things that we can do, if there's any response that we can provide to see what was needed. So we appreciate that, too. I would also say thank you for that reminder, our city responders as well. Holy cow, they were there on-site quickly, be fire, police, ambulance. They reached out to us immediately as soon as the call came in, and just amazing response from our first responders in our community and across the region that just makes you feel like you're in really good hands, knowing how quickly they're there and how quickly they go into that mode of safety, security response.
Good, well, good to hear that it was contained and not, could have been much worse.
Yep.
Any other topics, questions, comments, concerns from board members tonight?
I'd just like to say that was truly my honor to hand out those diplomas at graduation. This community can be very proud of those 400 and many students. They handled themselves beautifully. I was very impressed with this community and those students, those young adults are fabulous, and we should feel very proud, and I was very honored to do that, so thank you.
I think sometimes you forget that our CAPS associates, as they step forward and speak, are 17- and 18-year-old students, and how well they present themselves, how well they do. It's truly amazing the work that, it's a testament to our staff, it's a testament to our parents, and certainly our students. Amazing work.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Director Peterson, for volunteering and representing the board in that.
Of course.
I know it is a great honor for the board, and thank you for doing that. Okay, any other topics for tonight? If not, we do have, we're going to end the live stream and the public portion of the meeting tonight, and the board will go into an informal work session just regarding some board policy language, which then, post the work session, we will adjourn the meeting, but we'll go ahead and end our normal meeting for tonight. So thank you all for tuning in and for attending. And as I said, no decisions will get made in the work session, it's simply conversations, and then we will adjourn post-work session. So thank you all for coming tonight.